Ceremony and pledge by Paul Borup. So Paul will give you some time right now.
Sounds good. I just, a, just a quick remark today. I was following a lot of the things that are going on nationally and I was down in Salt Lake for a couple meetings and I was looking at all the things that are going on in life and it kind of reminded me of the Root Yard Kipling poem, "If," and that's one of my favorite poems and the first section of it that says, "If you can keep your head when all about you are losing theirs and blame it on you. If you can trust yourself when all men doubt you but make allowance for their doubting to. You can wait and not be tired by waiting or being lied about, don't deal in lies. Or being hated, don't give way to hating. And yet, don't look too good nor talk too wise." It just got me thinking about here in this, uh, this great valley that we have with all the hate-filled things that are going on and how that while we're seeing that in a lot of places, I don't think we see that on a broad base here of people giving into that, that hate and they're avoiding that and I greatly appreciate that. And so with that, I'll just conclude my comments in the, in the form of the prayer. Our Father in Heaven, as we approach through this afternoon, we're so grateful that we're able to participate in, in self-governance. We're grateful for this wonderful country that we have and the freedoms that we enjoy and we're, we're thankful for the citizens, our fellow citizens and the trust they place in us. We ask thee to please bless us with, with wisdom that as we, um, debate and look at the things that are, that are before us, that we can make decisions that would keep the, the quality of life that we enjoy here in the valley and that we can make, make decisions that would be pleasing to our, to our fellow citizens and, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
If you can join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Paul. Very appropriate words. We, we need to review and approve the agenda. Is there a motion to?
Move to approve the agenda, amended agenda.
Amended agenda. Thank you.
Make that motion.
Sure, a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the minutes, is, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Sharon, could I just make one? Um, on my report, I, we, I was talking about the Better Days 2020 and it says that we were going to have the event at the Event Center. That's not for sure yet, but we are looking at having it there. So that's just a small change I want to make on that.
Okay.
Do you want me to change that?
Yeah, if you would, please. That'd be great.
Any other corrections or additions? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve as amended?
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. Craig, report for, uh, the county executive.
Okay. I have one appointment and I would present to the council the name of Nan Small to be a, a library board member. She has served there and she is up for reappointment.
I move that be approved, Nan Small, to be on the library board.
Second up.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nan's not here then?
No, Nan is not here. The, uh, December 2018 financial statements have been sent out to the council. And I will have a copy here for signatures for the chairman, clerk.
Okay.
Also, other items, I did forward an email that I got about the Spike 150 Sesquicentennial Wagon Train and, uh, you'll see there that this individual is requesting some funding to help put on that, uh, event. This is going to take place in Box Elder County, but individuals that are participating there will be representing Cache County. So, uh, I don't know whether you want to have any discussion about that tonight. Um, but this is in addition to the parade, the requests that we've had for participants at the parade and apparently the American West Heritage Center has, has agreed to represent Cache County in that parade for the Golden Spike. I believe that's on the 4th of May. This wagon train would start on the 4th of May. They participate in that parade and then it would, they would, uh, end up in Kelt in Utah, wherever that is, approximately 70 miles, um, away and participate in the Golden Spike event. So.
Is, is, is that the reason for, uh, the, uh, setting a, uh, a budget?
We would, we would need to find, uh, $1,200 is what they're suggesting as a donation. We would need to find that in the budget. So if the council would approve that, I would probably just place that in a, in our budget opening at the next meeting if you're, if you would like me to do that.
Is this, the only question I had on that is that, is, who is this particular, or what is this particular event sponsored by and who, who's, is it just individuals that have gotten together to have this or is it part of all of Box Elder County's celebration?
I don't think that this is an official part of their celebration. That's a question that I could ask.
They, remember earlier, they asked if we, they'd like us to be part of, if we knew anybody that had wagons and horses that would like to participate.
That was for the parade.
That's simpler than this.
That was for the parade, but this is a little bit different. This is a wagon encampment.
Just continue on with those in the parade.
Now, did they want the $1,200 or did they want us to be involved in, uh, the restrooms? Is that?
That's the, $1,200 would cover the cost of the restrooms.
But they don't want us to be the one that facilitates the restrooms there for our $1,200 or just put $1,200 towards someone else doing it?
Someone else would do it, but they would have the donation to go towards that. When he called me initially, I said, "Why don't you write up a request, tell us what you're going to use it for and then I'll take that to the council." And so, uh, that's what I'm doing here. And, uh, so it's, it's basically a wagon train encampment, but I don't believe it's a, an official part of the celebration that they're planning.
Why don't we, uh, Craig, why don't you, and like, would they, hopefully maybe just talk to some of the, you know, the commissioners over there and see how it fits into their celebration and, you know, if it's part of it. I hate to just, you know, throw money to just, this is a group that this is what they're gonna do and, and not fit into the overall celebration.
He did say, you know, he wanted, they wanted to represent the county if we had a county flag or something that we could, could give them to show that they're representing the county, but, um...
Maybe we could get this Matt Wilkinson to come next meeting and tell us a little bit more about it. I'm not sure who this Matt Wilkinson is. There's Scott Wilkinson's got a younger brother named Matt. Is that the one it is?
Pretty sure that that's who it is.
That's who it is?
Yeah.
He lives around here, doesn't he?
Yeah, he's in North Logan.
Why don't we ask him to come and, you know, tell us a little bit more about it? I don't think we're objecting to what he's requesting as much as we'd like to have a few more details as to exactly what's gonna take place.
I will, uh, I will let him know that we are going to be considering this in our budget opening at the next meeting. He would like to come and give us some more information. He can do that.
That would be good, I think.
When I first read this, I thought that he said that he would proudly attach our banner to the restroom. Then I read, "Oh, my wagon." Like, oh, good.
Take Cache County, then you can use the restroom.
As long as his wagon's not carrying the restroom.
That's right. As long as his wagon isn't carrying the restroom, we're good.
Next time you're in Cache County, thank him for the restroom.
Yeah.
Okay. I will, I will proceed that way. And then, uh, we've had a discussion, I've had a discussion with, uh, with Bard and some others about the possibility of upgrading our council conference room so that we could use that room for, you know, audio vis- visual presentations, hooking it up to a computer there. From time to time, for example, we met with the trust and they brought a, a laptop and they set the laptop in the middle of the table and everybody just had to kind of sit around it and look. It's, it's not, it's not set up and I think for a fairly minimal cost, we could put a screen in the, on the east wall, um, with controls possibly going through the floor, um, to, to upgrade that room so that we could use it in that way. So when we have committee meetings, uh, and other things, we could, we could use it. I think it would make it a lot more effective in there. Uh, I wanted to just run that by the council before I put Bard to work on getting some cost estimates and things, see how you feel you would, uh, that would be, uh, something that could be beneficial to the county.
Given the way that presentations are done today and the technology continues to march forward, uh, I, I think that would be a very appropriate thing to do.
I do too.
I think we all agree that these are a great, a great addition to the, to the council.
And there's times when Cameron wanted to present some financial things in there and he just had to read them off and when you start reading 10 numbers, everyone just zones right out and so.
The fire department, they all do. That'd be a good thing.
Our bishop's office has more technology in that room than that does. That's gonna be nice to, a great little bit.
All right. We'll, we'll see, uh, see what we can put together then, see what the needs are. I know that the walls in this building are very difficult to run.
Pretty hard.
Wiring into. So that's something that will have to be considered and, and, uh, and we'll, we'll come back with a cost estimate there.
It's probably easier to run it under the carpet than it is to find a way through the wall.
Yeah, that's, or, you know, possibly, I don't know if we can come down through the wall or we'll have to look at that. Other than that, I don't have any updates for you today. That's concluding my report.
Thank you. There is nothing on the consent agenda today. We have a, a special item of interest, the Bear River Health Department Annual Report. Holly, if you would, uh, enlighten us with what's happening at the Bear River Health Department besides the new building and everything that's going on with that.
Yeah, we'll talk about that. Did everyone need a copy? Um, so I appreciate you letting us have a minute of time on your agenda. I promise to keep it brief as your agenda is long and hopefully you get home before breakfast. So, um, love's all of your heart. So we are excited to share a little bit of what we've been doing this year at the health department. Um, I know that, um, this was also sent to you electronically, but I thought it's nice to have a hard copy to look at, especially because we did have a correction that had to be made on one of the pages. But, um, just a little overview, um, if you look to pages two and three, um, is, there's an introduction to our Board of Health and we like to always make sure we're thanking the counties for the support of our Board of Health, especially to Craig Butters and James Swink who volunteer time on that board, um, every month to help make decisions for our health department. So you can read the letter from our health officer. Um, on page four and five, the health department made the decision this year, um, to take the journey, um, to become accredited. And accreditation is something that's super popular in the world of academics and in hospitals, but it's fairly new to a public health department, um, but still a, a big endeavor that we're undertaking. So in that process, one of the things that we're required to do is that we need to assure that we're always looking at the health data for our community to make decisions and to set priorities and that we're working with partners in that process. So pages four and five kind of detail that process that we've been, um, going through to identify health priorities. And on page five, you can see that the health priorities that have been identified by our health area is that they would like to first address mental health, second substance abuse, misuse and abuse, third communicable disease and fourth chronic disease and obesity. And as we flip the pages over to six and seven, you'll kind of be able to identify why those were identified as the health priorities. Um, these two pages are kind of a snap, snapshot of our communities, um, being a multi-county health department. Of course, we serve Box Elder, Cache and Rich counties. So we have the population indicated there as well as, um, the language spoken in the homes, what the income levels are like, um, the number of people with health insurance, et cetera. On page seven though, is where you'll see the leading causes of death for individuals in America and we compare that to Utah and also to our health district. Um, this is where hopefully you got our little insert because there was an error in the printing. Um, the US rates were total numbers, the rate hadn't been calculated. And so the little insert gives you an idea so you can make those comparisons. Um, but just to highlight for just a minute, in most of those 10 areas, um, our health district does better than the state of Utah or the nation as a whole with a few exceptions. Um, our diabetes rates are higher. Um, the incidence of suicide, which isn't probably surprising to a lot of us, is higher. The incidence of flu, deaths from flu or influenza is higher and also the rates of, um, Alzheimer's disease. So given that that's where we, we're seeing that we, you know, could do some improving, it makes sense that then that became our priorities for our plans. Do you have questions about any of those numbers?
I'm confused. You said we are higher in those areas?
Uh-huh.
These numbers are lower.
So if you, you kind of have to use this little white, white thing to compare the US and then you can look up Bear River and so for example.
This is US, okay.
Yep, yep. So we are higher than the US.
Not included in, in there yet.
Oh, not in there yet?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, good question. And unfortunately, that was caught after we had printed 200 copies of this plan, this report. Um, on page eight, um, is an overview of our budget and our expenditures. At the bottom, you see the revenue and 58% of our total budget is coming from contracts. We have staffed that are writing grants to help fund programs. Um, 12% of our total budget comes from taxes and is supported from counties like Cache and Box Elder and Rich. Um, at the top, pie chart, um, shows our expenditures and you can see that fortunately, um, we're a fiscally sound agency and our revenue exceeds our expenditures. Um, and then finally, just the last section of the book that I thought I'd highlight really quick is again, based on the, the priorities that we have set with those four goals, the health department has also written a strategic plan. We have four goals in mind and I just thought I would highlight per minute some things we're doing to, um, touch on each of those goals. So the first says that we'll be among the healthiest in the state. That's our, our number one goal. So to do that, um, we have some numbers reported there from each of our, um, six divisions. Um, to highlight a couple, this last year, we've, um, tested 196 patients for STDs and so they come in, they think they're suspect for a sexually transmitted disease and so if they are tested positive, that results in 479 investigations completed. So we do a lot of tracking with communicable disease. We've issued over 5,500 food handler permits to assure that the, um, food that you consume when eating out is, is safe and is being handled properly. Um, we've had over 1,100 clients served by our substance abuse division. We've had 637 individuals trained by a program called QPR. That's a suicide prevention program. Um, every month in our WIC department, we serve over 3,600 children and we've received this year 66 calls to our, our emergency service hotline. Um, goal number two, which is on page 11, says that we'll, we'll strive to be recognized as a leader in public health. Um, so our program, I thought I would just bring to your attention, it's pretty new at the health department, is, um, highlighted actually on page 12. Um, and it's a program connected to our substance abuse division. We're trying to increase the self-sufficiency of our clients, um, so that that can assist in their recovery. So in addition to them receiving treatment, we've had 18 clients that were provided with worker school support. Um, 19 have been connected or provided with some housing assistance and two, we've helped with transportation, meaning we helped connect them with a bike. So, um, there's an example of how we're, how we are, uh, trying to be a leader in public health. Goal number three on page 13, um, in public health, something we really try to do is to not duplicate service. So we want to make sure that we are, we have partnerships and we're all working together to achieve similar goals. Um, so this goal says we'll strengthen relationships to result in improved health of our citizens. On page 16 is the page I often like to highlight, um, when we're looking at this report. And the reason for that is on page 16, it kind of shows a more comprehensive approach to the opioid epidemic. We have some services taking place that we've, um, established a crisis center, or excuse me, uh, not a crisis center, but it's a crisis team. Um, at the health department, we also employ two physicians who help with vivitrol injections, which is medication assisted treatment to help individuals who are dependent break that addiction. And then the third paragraph there highlights some things we're doing with prevention of opioids and we're really trying to encourage individuals to ask their physicians or their healthcare providers for other options besides opioids, other ways they can manage their pain and so forth. Um, and then finally, goal number four says that we will try to connect the communities to services that are convenient. So, um, a few things we've done there, um, many people aren't aware, but, uh, the health department does offer mental health counseling to non-medicaid clients. So we're trying to fill that gap because we do have quite a, um, a disparity there as far as the number of service providers we have and the need, um, for our community. So that is something and it's, it's on a very affordable rate. Um, of course, you're all aware of our new building, um, that we opened just a couple weeks ago. We're super excited to be able to be more convenient for those individuals that are on the south end of the valley. Um, we also have a mobile unit that we've been using to bring out to our underserved communities. And then finally, we did do an overhaul of our website, trying to connect people to services, uh, making them more accessible, using things like online forms and so forth. So with that said, um, that's our report. Um, page 20 says we're looking forward to continuing to improve our services, make them more, um, available to our community. And I just, with that, wonder if you have any questions?
I have one, a quick question for you. On page 10, it talks about the tobacco compliance checks and then it kind of feeds into one of your goals. Um, are those just where you go and check retailers to make sure they're not selling to underage?
That's correct.
And then for tobacco, is that also, how does kind of vaping work into that? Cause that seems to be the...
Super good question. They actually do compliance with vaping as well.
Okay. So that kind of falls under the same?
Mm-hmm. And then if, um, if someone does sell to our underage decoy, there is actually two levels of penal penalties. There's a civil and a criminal. Um, and we do the civil hearings at the health department, hoping that in that process, we're making sure that the owners or managers are training their staff to prevent that. So, um, it's a very friendly process, but just trying to do what we can. Of course, you've probably heard in the recent news, um, that vaping rates have gone up significantly, especially among the youth. It's true for our area too, but not at the same rates as it, as it is, um, on a nation as a whole. So, good question.
I have some, two things. First, I just want to say I really appreciate the way that this information is presented. Sometimes numbers can be boring and the way this is presented makes it readable and easy to digest and I love all the color. So thanks for presenting it that way. The question I have is in here, so maybe you're not prepared and if so, I apologize.
That's great.
What's the status of medical marijuana in the health department? Are you guys gonna be a distribution center? Have you discussed that at all?
Um, Craig can probably also, um, comment on this.
We, we did discuss that at length at our last board meeting and, right now, the proposal is that the health district or the health department will be a, a dispensary.
They'll be a dealer, will they?
A dispensary.
Dispensary.
Dispensary, thank you. That's the right word.
They're making, they're making plans right now as to how that will happen and I'm sure that there will probably be more directives from the state, but it will have to take place in a separate part of the building than, you know, the regular, uh, where the regular services are, are permitted or, uh, given. And so I know that there are still a lot of questions, but that, that's some of the information we got at our last meeting. So.
Craig, thank you.
The health officers? No, it's, that's a great question.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
Question for, no. Unfortunately, I get to sit on those meetings that Craig is referencing. Um, the health officers, which are the, the directors of each of the 13 local health departments, have been really, really involved in that process. Um, they figure they underestimated what it might cost to become a dispensary and so some of the negotiations that are gonna be taking place is to, um, consider those costs. Um, as Craig mentioned, it does need to be separate location. We think the way our building is structured on our north, on 1300 North could accommodate that with some security that wouldn't, need to be, um, there. And then we would also, our Brigham Office would also become a dis, um, dispensary, um, dispensary. Yeah, sorry, sorry. Um, thanks for the clarification. Anyhow, um, yeah, so there's still, we're kind of waiting for legislative session to see what happens with that, but I would say that there's a lot of, um, time that's being spent to make sure that we, um, make it available to those that are in need and that we're doing it in a very responsible way and that it won't be in a way that encourages, um, youth use. That's something that James Swink has communicated to us over and over, is that there needs to be an education component, um, with all of this as well, so that people don't, just because it's being dispensed at the health department, that is, isn't equated with health.
I think that, uh, the dispensaries of the Board of Health would not, uh, come on board until, isn't it midway through 2020? It seems like that's when the...
I think we have to be ready to go by January 2020, but then I don't know if it takes effect. Well, don't, don't quote me on the date.
Yeah. So it's, it's a ways out. There's still.
It's a ways out still, okay.
Still quite a bit of work to be done and quite a bit of time to do that before it actually takes place.
What kind of additional personnel or, you know, security, different things are, uh, there? Has that been discussed or anything?
So, um, I would want our health officer to speak on, um, to that question. I know that he is interested in working with the county and has asked Craig to follow up on maybe having, um, subcontract, maybe even with the county to help with some of the security concern. That's mostly the additional personnel that we're, we're concerned with at this point.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Well, again, thank you for your time. If there are any, any other questions, I'll speak myself.
Thank you, Holly. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you, Holly, very much. Okay, Sherry, um, we're gonna hear about the Cache County Library.
I appreciate you inviting me over to, um, give a report on the library. We're excited because of the new things that are happening. Um, we're trying to build up our, uh, Overdrive Library so that it opens up the availability of books to all of the citizens with little or no waitlist. Right now, if you go through one of the other libraries in the county, you can have to wait 80 turns to get your book. You can be as high as 79 on the waitlist. So, um, with ours so far, the wait, uh, time is six days. So that's a remarkable improvement. And we appreciate your help and your, desire for us to go forth with this and allowing us a budget that allows us to buy these books and make them available to patrons across the county. Right now, we have more than 700 books online that can be checked out. They're both, um, ebooks to read as well as audiobooks to listen to. Um, during the past year, we had more, well, we had close to 5,000 checkouts on Overdrive this last year. Um, and like I said, with just an average of six days waiting to get the books that they wanted. Uh, we're reaching out to more and more citizens. We've, uh, been in contact with North Cache, with their English teachers for the seventh graders and issued library cards to them to make it available for them to check out books online. Um, we've also had a number of students from Cache High that have acquired library cards so that they can check out these books as well. So that reached the north end with North Cache and now we're, um, talking with South Cache to get them on board so that their students can also check out books online. And this will also allow their parents to check out books. The family can have two books at a time for each card and they're allowed four, four cards. Um, so the last reports that we got, the number of users doubled in the last quarter of 2,000. So, the last reports that we got, the number of users doubled in the last quarter of 2018 of people who were checking books out. And those, the checkouts tripled in that same quarter. And this is due to getting the cards out to these students. So, we're excited about that. The only downside is, if there is a downside, is that these books are expensive, and we'll have to keep up with the titles to go with the number of patrons checking them out. That's the only downside, but so far, we're doing okay that way. Also, we offer to get books from other libraries. They're called interlibrary loans. And that is very popular with the citizens right now because they can come in and request a book. And if we don't have the book, and it may be one that we're not interested in buying because it's older than three years, we can request it from another library. Or if we think it's one that most patrons that we have wouldn't be interested in, we can still provide them access to the books. And right now, there are nine that are checked out in our library, and three are on their way to our library. And then, we have enough budget, thanks to you for appropriating money that we can pay for the postage to get the book back to the lending library. So, we're very appreciative of that. Our storytimes are doing about the same as always. We have really high attendance at our storytimes. We looked at maybe the possibility of there becoming more interest in library times and in storytimes. And if there is, I think the best way to do it within our budget would be to have additional storytimes given at our library. We could do that on Mondays and Fridays when we don't have any. However, River Heights has reached out, and they have offered, they have requested that we do a library time, storytime over at their city offices. The room that they have has no furniture, but they're willing to sit on the floor during the storytime. We wouldn't be able to do any crafts because there are no tables and chairs for them to sit at. But it would be beneficial still because children learn so much with singing songs and listening to stories, hearing the vocabulary. So, it still would be a benefit to them to learn early literacy skills. And so, that's one of the things that we're looking at. Again, I want to tell you, thank you for all of your hard work and all that you do to help this library run successfully.
That was going to be my one question, is what are the trends? And obviously, they're up as far as usage. I was going to ask you what the trends were as far as usage. Obviously, they're up, as you've reported, so thank you.
I'll say, one of the things, I'm on the library board with Sheri, and one of the things that we've been trying to figure out is how to let more people know about the library, because a lot of people don't know about it. And they were smart in having this idea of taking it to the junior high kids so that their families know about it. But one of the things that we also talked about is if we want to let more people know about that and be able to get these books from Overdrive, which is the online book collection, that they'll have to have a little more budget. I think they've been pretty much operating closely to the same budget over several years. And so, there's hope that maybe we could add some into their budget so that they can then have more books, and then they can take that library, make it available to more people, let more people know about it.
Thank you. I think at the end of last year, we had a little bit of money left over in the budget for books, to purchase books and things. So, at our next budget opening, that will most likely be coming to you to choose to, as a council, to roll that over into the next year's budget so that this year, it can be spent on new books. So, we had, I can't remember how much was left, five, six thousand dollars?
I think it was four thousand.
Four thousand, okay. So, we'll have that at our budget opening at the next meeting.
So, that Overdrive, then, is that just almost like just an electronic version of the library? We have a limited number of titles? And so, as people check those out, each time they're checked out, you pay a licensing fee?
We buy the book initially. For an audiobook, it's about a hundred dollars. For the books to read online, it's not quite that much. And some of the publishers limit how many checkouts it can have before you have to rebuy it. So, it's a lot more expensive than just buying a regular book. But I tried to get the ones that are the most popular, the most requested in our library, hoping that that represents what will be wanted by those patrons outside of the library area. So...
Okay, thank you very much, Sheri.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure.
Thanks.
Okay, we don't have any Board of Equalization matters tonight. We'll now move to our public hearing portion of the agenda. Our first public hearing is ordinance twenty nineteen dash zero one, DD Auto Salvage Rezone. We'll open this up, then, to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this?
Let's let Josh give us an overview first.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Josh.
Give him the first thing and the last thing.
Yeah. Make sure I'm doing this right over here. Hold the wrong one. So, this is a rezone request for DND Auto and Salvage. The majority of this property has already been zoned, commercial and industrial. This is a request, rezone one point three acre parcel from the commercial zone to the industrial zone. There are different uses allowed in each zone. Currently, it's zoned industrial, sorry, currently it's zoned commercial. It needs to be transitioned over to industrial zone. This was a gap parcel created through various lines and parcels. The owner has subsequently taken care of that gap status and taken control of the entire property. The only outstanding issue is that this will have to be added to the conditional use permit on the rest of the property that remains to the north. So, they'll have to amend their conditional use permit. There are no other issues that the Planning Commission saw with this rezone request. They did recommend the rezone unanimously to change it from commercial to industrial. Any questions for Josh? Thanks, Josh. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to make a comment concerning this rezone?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
Move to close the second, or close the public hearing, a second made, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? There's none, I guess, because I heard everybody say aye. Okay.
Do you want to go on to thirteen A if there's no?
Yeah, might as well, we have to. We have thirty seconds. Let's go on to thirteen A, initial proposals of consideration concerning this particular ordinance, ordinance twenty nineteen zero one, DD Auto and Salvage Rezone. Would anyone like to waive the rules and make a motion on this?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to waive the rules and make a motion that we go ahead and change the zoning on this from a ten to a five.
I think you're talking thirteen A, it's from commercial to industrial.
Yeah, industrial. Second, Ben.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, that passes, then. We're right on time with our next public hearing. The Applewood Hollow RU five rezone, request rezone twelve and a half acres from agricultural A ten to rural RU five zone. Josh?
This is a rezone request just on the southeast side of Nibley. You can see Nibley City comes down Hollow Road through here. Hollow Road continues onto Blacksmith Fork Canyon. This parcel takes access from Hollow Road through private drives and is on the east side of the Blacksmith Fork River, which is just on, the Blacksmith Fork River is about the boundary of Nibley. In reviewing this parcel, the primary issues and concerns relate to the access to the parcel. There's a north access and a south access. The north access is a single-lane paved private drive over a single-lane bridge. The south access is a drive that varies between twelve and nineteen feet of gravel over another private bridge. And then, the roadway subsequently peters out to the south. The primary concern being is that there is limited suitable access to this property. The letter from Nibley City was first written based on their request to go to an RU two, which was subsequently changed to a request to an RU five. Nibley City outlined concerns that you can read. If I could find the section, under section C ten B, they had a number of concerns with the rezone request. The Planning Commission did unanimously recommend denial of this rezone. You can see the three, sorry, the three conclusions on page five of the staff report. The property lacks adequate provision of public services, including emergency access, refuse collection, and public infrastructure. The existing substandard private access road currently exceeds the number of single-family dwellings allowed on private roads. And the access from Nibley City Road and given location of the property, the issues of the infrastructure would be better addressed as part of Nibley City Development than the development on a municipal road. Those were the recommendations from the Planning Commission.
Any questions for Josh?
Josh, I have a question. How many homes are already on those private roads? Clear to me.
From the north?
You know, I'm just going to object, Josh, you're giving incorrect information.
Let him give what he knows, and then we'll open up to the public to correct anything.
I'm not sure exactly how many homes are on that north access. We hadn't done a road review of that. I think the road review is on the south access.
And on the south access, how many homes are there?
I know there's one that I can remember off the top of my head.
Okay. But there's not more than three?
I don't know about the north access.
Okay, thank you, Josh.
I know there's, I know there's this one, and there may be some back, there's back access to lots. I don't think it's primary access. I couldn't tell you exactly the number of homes.
So, I guess my question then would be, this talks about there's too many homes already on the road, so I'm confused as to why that says that if we don't even know the number of homes.
I'd have to go dig back through and apologize.
Apologize for putting you on the spot there. I should have called and asked you.
Well, when they meet with the Planning and Zoning Board, they have it all printed up. These conclusions were drawn by the Planning and Zoning. These weren't drawn by the Planning Commission.
By the Development Services.
Chris, they were conclusions.
And you were probably there.
Chris is in California right now.
I'm thinking there's five, but I'm not sure. I should remember, but I don't.
We can pull that information for you, get an exact count on... We can get an exact count on that north access. No, the south access, only services one at this point. Neither case, neither road. Meets any of our standards or criteria, but we can pull the number of homes if you'd like that number. I still have it at my fingers here.
This is just a public hearing, anyway. We don't have to do anything today.
I can keep looking, but I may not be able to find it as quickly as you'd like.
Any other questions for Josh? Okay, we'll now open the public hearing and invite anyone who would like to address it to please come to the microphone and state your name, even though we know it.
Danes, I'm representing John and Elaine and Andrew. It's actually their son Chris.
Come up there.
Did you get that?
That way, the live streaming can be picked up.
I probably shouldn't have interrupted Josh, but sometimes you just have incorrect information, and it's something we can't seem to deal with. We've explained a couple of times this situation, but it's like the water isn't getting to the end of the row. There are two accesses off Blacksmith Road to properties. But the property we're talking about has nothing to do with the north access. You can't get from the north access to this property. And it shouldn't be dealt with as though there's two roads to the property. There isn't, there's a single road. And the single road is a sixty-foot wide road that's been there since nineteen ninety-five that runs right through a subdivision. There is only one home on that road. That's it. And so, because of the concerns about the first letter, they went back from an RU two to RU five. So, there will only be two homes on that road. There's no concern about the legal right to use the road. There are no other users who have rights on that road, and it's been preserved for a long time. There are no problems with utilities. There is adequate utilities on-site to service the second home. There are no problems of any kind why this shouldn't be approved. We sent a very detailed letter to the County Commission when we got the letter from Nibley. And I think it's probably appropriate for me to go back to that letter because that's the first time this matter becomes confused. Nibley sent a letter which said, "These are the reasons you should not approve this." It's accessed only by private roads, plural. Well, there isn't roads, there's a single road, and it's sixty feet wide, and no one else has any right to it except John Danes. And John's brother, Chris, wants to build a home on the other half of the twelve acres. So, the letter starts off by saying there's more than the legal number of houses being accessed from this road. Now, what they're doing is they're totaling homes that are on the first road, the north road and the south road together, to make this decision about this separate piece of property. I don't know why you can do that. You wouldn't total the roads, the two different roads, a home served by it. Now, the north road does serve four or five different families, and it's a separate piece of property, has a separate legal parcel number. And that north road does not go to this property. And the south road does not go to the north property. So, that's just a confusing idea. There are unanswered questions about the legal access to the parcel. I do not know what they're talking about here. There are no legal questions about this sixty-foot ride of way. It runs right through a Nibley subdivision, and it has since nineteen ninety-five. Third question is, there are significant challenges related to providing utilities to the site. The site has gas, it has electricity, it will have a septic tank. There are no other utilities that are needed. This property also has, I mean, it has everything there now. A home has already been, one home has already been built on this south road. This is just a second home. So, it already has, the one home already has the utility services, and those are more than adequate for a second home. Then it says, "There's a risk of septic tanks contaminating Nibley's sourced water protection zone." We've obtained a letter from Bear River Mental Health... We've obtained a letter from Bear River Mental Health. This is in a classification that covers virtually the whole valley, and the classification is that that classification is only to be used to deny septic tank permit if the city has passed an ordinance saying it does. Nibley City has not done that. The Bear River Mental Health has reviewed this situation, says a septic tank permit can be obtained. So I'm at a loss to know what the objection is about this property, except the continuing confusion by combining two separate areas and trying to combine the problems of, by putting the two of them together. That isn't how we evaluate property. We evaluate property parcel by parcel. This parcel has a single right-of-way, it's 60 feet wide to the river, and after the river, it's 65 feet wide. There's an existing bridge. Fire service is already provided to the home that's on this road. I just, I don't know of what other problems there are with it, Josh. How did we get so confused on this?
It sounds like there is some confusion that needs to be studied a little.
There's a letter that we wrote.
Can I ask you one quick question, George? Talking about the roadway, it's a private road.
It is a private roadway.
Is it, is it, or will it be deeded to both parcels? So that some point when the Danes' family isn't occupying it, some future occupants won't have any trouble with access?
Carl, it, what it does is this roadway goes through the subdivision, and so it goes, it starts at Nibley Hollow, it goes through a subdivision 60 feet wide, then it has a bridge across the river. It traditionally went up and serviced some farmland, about 80 acres, and so what we're doing is building two homes on that, on this parcel which it passes through. We will continue to use that roadway for the farming area that's behind it.
Is it two homes or one home?
Pardon, there's a.
Isn't there already an existing home?
There's one home on the road now.
And this would be in order to build a second home?
Right. There's 12 acres there before then, so when you go to RU5, you're really limiting it to two homes, because there's no more five acres. So that's all that's ever going to be built on this roadway, on this land. If they ever wanted to do something more, they would have to come back and get something changed. But I think this is a perfect example of a kind of a subdivision that should be allowed in the county. Nibley City doesn't want anything done on its perimeter. I understand that. This land and the roadways existed, I think, before Nibley City had any subdivisions anywhere around us. It predates the development that it goes through. When they started with this land in 1995, there were a few scattered homes along Nibley Hollow. It was mostly a rural area. And they went across the river, built, there's three or four homes that used the north road that have been permitted, given different statutes at different times, but that really doesn't have anything to do with this south road and the two homes we're talking about. John, Andrew, did I miss anything?
Okay. Thank you, George. Any questions for George? Any clarifications needed?
I'm just wondering, in one portion, it says that you never did apply for annexation from Nibley City.
Right.
And, but for some reason, did Nibley City think you were asking for annexation?
No, we've never asked for annexation. Probably never will.
Okay.
Thank you, George.
If it would be helpful, I'd be happy to supply a legal opinion on the quality of that roadway. That if you need a legal opinion that it's a dedicated right-of-way, and that it's 60 feet wide, you have to provide you a legal opinion to that effect, and also that no one else has a right to access it. Occasionally, there are people who use it, but they do not have a right to access it.
George, the people who are new in the agriculture unit, they have a right to access through there, don't they, the?
Pardon me?
The people that are running the land, they have a right to access it through there.
I don't think there's anybody that's running any farmland that comes through this, on this road.
So where are they accessing the other farm? Is that from the north road?
I don't know where other people access, but this roadway is limited to this land.
You said that the road would access two homes in the farm ground.
Well, that's the farm ground that belonged to John Danes.
Yeah. That's what, that's what he was given.
You are John running equipment and stuff on that road to access, which is totally okay. I just thought that there was no one else that was going to do that.
I think the confusion is a little bit about there is a property that this runs through that has had application that was never approved for subdivision, but their access is on the roadway that goes to the bridge. Beyond that, this roadway that we have access to has always been there, and it's our access. It's not their access to their farmland. They have access to their farmland by the roadway that this right-of-way now goes on that is a roadway in the subdivision.
I see.
And so they have access to the bridge and across to their property, but not access onto the 60-foot right-of-way that we have that goes all the way up to our 80-acre farm up on top.
Any other questions? Thank you, George.
Move to close the public hearing then, unless you.
Anything else?
Well, it is a public hearing. Is there any people that want to talk?
Is there still more? Is there anyone? Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this from the public?
Move to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. 11C, we need to set a public hearing for February 12th at 6:00 PM to open the 2019 budget.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing February 12th, 6 o'clock to open the budget.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We have Resolution 2019-02, the Ridgeview Annexation of Providence City. Josh, is that something you can enlighten us about?
This is an annexation request between, located between Providence and River Heights. Providence is to the south, River Heights is to the north, Logan City is further to the north. This is 1,000 East. That comes down from Logan City and drops into Providence. If you'll recognize the area, this is where the Zollinger Tree Farm is. Thank you, Lee. Zollinger Tree Farm is here. The cemetery is located right here in this piece, and then there is more farmland that is located here. There is a request to annex two parcels of ground. You can see them in blue. They are highlighted in the dashed area here. These two pieces would be annexed into Providence City. This is taking one island and making two smaller islands out of it. So you can see that they are leaving the two homes that exist here in the west, and they're leaving the two parcels that, or three parcels, I guess, that exist to the As part of state law, it requires that the council or the county, it just states the county either formally agree or protest the annexation if they are making more or smaller islands or peninsulas. In this case, we don't see any problems. None of the services will change. We have an ongoing issue in this area regarding 1,000 East. We'll be handing that section of this road off to Providence City, but there are still multiple chunks where, I think we've talked about before, River Heights annexed both sides of the road, but not the road itself. That's this road. So we're working on that as these pieces all kind of come in over time, getting rid of our services on that road. It doesn't make any sense for us to run a truck all the way up there to maintain three blocks of roadway. But at this time, you can see we've given you three potential conclusions. You do have the option to either agree with the annexation or to protest it. Our baseline recommendation is that we agree with it.
There's no way we can make and take care of that last little island.
We can't force more pieces to annex. Cities can, but the county cannot.
And we can disagree with it, and they can still do it, can't they?
They could. It would just mean that we would send a protest onto the boundary commission, you need to have one more meeting. And they would then review it, and really the question at the boundary commission is, are they violating state law, or are they annexing a parcel that they cannot service since they're going to take the road? The answer to those questions is.
Just declare it surplus property. Give it to the neighbors.
That's a novel idea.
If I could, this, the planning department's done a good job, if it please the chair, to more formalize the resolution. It is in state code that the county has to prove if we create an island. And in this case, an island, two islands are created, but at the same time, unincorporated county property is annexed that, you know, is on a road that the road department would have to service. So in effect, this lowers the burden on the road department if it's annexed into Providence City, my understanding. And that's the justification for the recommendation. So as I said, as counsel for the boundary commission, these type of annexations, at least for the county, makes sense because we're reducing our service obligation.
That farm ground then on the east side, that's going to go into Providence also?
I am not sure. I think, I think that.
Or is it just the west? Is it just the west portion?
It's just the west for this, these two parcels right here. I believe that this farm ground is also owned by the Zollinger family, and that's probably under conservation easement. That may not annex anytime soon. There's no purpose to annexing. And that's been part of the problem, is you can see some of these gaps. This is conservation easement, and this is a cemetery, so there's no drive for annexation for either of those parcels. And so that's, that's kind of the holes we deal with. You can see another hole right over here that contains three or four parcels right between the river and Logan, Logan, the Logan River in River Heights. And that becomes kind of our servicing difficulties. We wind up with three parcels here and four parcels there, and two blocks of road, and that becomes very problematic for the county, and this has happened over 30 years. In this case, they're stepping up, they're taking the infrastructure. There's limited concerns.
Where's the road?
The road is directly on, there's a road on the north side that you can see is already grayed, because that's already, that's 600 South, that's already in River Heights. And then you've got 1,000 East, which you can see runs right here, and they are annexing that portion for the extent of this property.
Mr. Chair, if it please the council, one reason to object to these, and I've seen this, is if the city's all annexed up to the road, but don't also annex the road, because then basically they're pushing those services off to the county. So in this case, it's valuable for the development services to review the annexation and make sure if they're going to annex, they'll also take the infrastructure.
If they do not, for instance, I remember when in Paradise, they were annexing some ground, we had a county road, and we didn't want to annex the county road either. But they said if we didn't, we couldn't get access for the houses off the side.
That's our.
That was, that was.
Current policy right now. So we have, we have a, we have in our standards that if you are a municipality developing onto a county road, you have to meet our criteria, which requires actually the approval of council. And if you are in a unincorporated area, accessing off of a city road, you need their approval, which on the last rezon, you could see that same dichotomy where they're accessing onto a Nibley City road. Here's an instance, this is 1,000 West, this is Cox Honey right at the top.
Yep.
And so this road here comes on down and through, and you can see that Millville annexed up to the east right-of-way line. It's up to the west right-of-way line. So we still own this road going between those two jurisdictions. We're working on that one. We've got agreements in place that hopefully will get concluded this year. But if we come over.
Yeah, we've been finding that, but what happens if we close the road?
We can't close it. We can turn it back to gravel. But this is, this is the.
That'll change ownership.
This is the top end of 1,000 East. So this is Center Street or Mountain Road as it comes up the cliffside, and then you drop on down. So this is all development in River Heights. Logan City has just agreed to take the road to this point, but you can see where River Heights, this is actually wider than it actually is. River Heights annexed a one-foot strip through this road to get to the other side. So they annexed a one-foot strip there and a one-foot strip there, but left the rest of the road in county ownership.
And there's nothing we can do to fight that kind of stuff?
We're working on it.
Well, I mean, at the time they tried to do that, you could protest the annexation.
We should have protested then, but nobody was checking these things in the late 90s when they did that development. So now we're checking them, we're catching them, we're filing protests as we can, and one of the things you'll see out of us next, this coming year, is an actual formal policy on council's docket to review how we handle annexations. Because right now, state code is very ambiguous. We want a formal policy for this is when we do what. So, but for now, I don't think we have any overt concerns with the annexation as it's presented.
So, but when they're annexing this piece, they're going to annex the road up to 600 South?
Yep.
And then there's going to be that little piece of road up to the top of that.
Yep.
On the east side, it's still going to be ours.
Jigsaw puzzle.
Why don't we just say, take that little piece of road too?
Because that piece going north should go into River Heights, not into Providence.
The question that I just come up with, why, if that piece of property is being annexed, why are they not requiring that other piece by, to be annexed?
These, these?
A little skinny piece. Why don't they take it all?
Those people don't want to be annexed, because they don't want to pay the taxes.
Yeah, but the thing is, is when you have a larger piece that's got more value than that smaller piece with the two homes, you can force them into doing it.
State law changed.
No, you can't anymore.
State law changed about two years ago. So now we have a clause that calls out rural real property. So if you're a house on rural property, the ability for a city to force you in, they can only do that if they're already providing you utility services.
If they're selling you water, they can do it, and otherwise they can't.
So where are those homes getting it? Have they got a well and a septic?
I couldn't tell you. And even if they are getting services, they're probably not from Providence, they're probably from River Heights. And again, this annexation's going to Providence, and those homes would then have to go to River Heights if they were providing services. But at the end of the day, there's no services that we provide those two homes. They get all their services from River Heights, but they don't pay River Heights City taxes.
The challenge that I see also is if Providence takes over that road and they grade it and maintain it, who takes that little teeny tiny strip from in front of that home, those homes that don't want it?
They take it, they own it.
They already do.
Well, the county is the one that does it, isn't it?
Nope, not that road.
What about the little strip?
In front of that little home right here?
Yeah.
No, no, we don't touch any of six South, except where it is, Highway 238, further to the west.
So we don't have to deal with that as far as maintenance?
We're already not dealing with it.
That's one side of the issue.
I don't see any reason why we don't just go ahead and let it, let it do it.
That's what it said.
So do we make a motion now, or do we wait?
It is a resolution. It'd have to, you'd have to waive the rules, but there is a formal resolution.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd waive the, waive the rules and make, approve the resolution that we go ahead and allow Providence to annex this property from the county and. let it be done with.
Second.
One question before we vote. We, we are sure that they are taking the road then?
It's on their plan.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Josh, I think you're through for tonight.
In regards to the Applewood Hollow, I think we can probably take some of the comments that we heard in public hearing. We'll readdress them for your next meeting.
Yeah, it was, it was a little bit different here tonight than what we heard.
Yeah, well, that's the problem with moving targets. You analyze them once and then they move.
I'm, I'm looking right now, it's, well, that's another discussion.
It's still on your agenda if you want to discuss it.
But I'm sitting there looking at the, and how he described it and everything is, I'm sitting there, are we looking at the same properties?
Well, subdivision, he's talking about-
You can talk about it, it's still on your agenda, on your-
Thirteen C.
Thirteen C. So if you want to talk about thirteen C and ask me any questions, you can.
I, you know, he said there's no access to it from the north. There is an access to it, to the north. And then the other access is it goes kind of a little narrow right through the middle of one piece of property. And there's just a bridge. I mean, the quality of that bridge, we don't know.
I'm intimately aware of this entire area because we do a lot of river work down through there.
It goes through a delinquent parcel.
Are you looking on GIS, Dave?
Yeah.
So the south access is not suitable for a single-family home, they'd have to rebuild that access. The bridge has serious concerns.
Straight blow your arrow.
Yeah, it's right here.
And now, can I, where does it, he said it gets a sixty-foot wide that goes all the way back through a subdivision.
They've recorded that I don't know about.
He commented about an easement.
We, we did not review this north access because that's, it's literally twelve feet wide of pavement and the bridge.
But it does go to the property.
It does go to the property, and that's the current access that that home uses. So that's why we said there's too many homes. So they're thinking they're gonna use the south access. In either case, neither of the roads meets our criteria or standards.
But if it's a lane?
If it's a private road, does it have to meet county standards?
Fire code.
Fire code.
It has to meet fire code, which means it has to be twenty feet wide because we don't have hydrants there, we have to get water containers in and back out.
Yeah.
And so having a twenty-foot wide road, those roads, it's difficult for me to get my Jeep back there when we were doing river work.
The question I have in that is, we, we, and change in the zoning, don't deal with the road width and all that other kind of stuff. That comes later when they apply for a building permit.
You, you do, because when you look at zoning, you're looking at, does it have suitable items there necessary for them to do the work or the development they want to do? That's it. You still have ultimate flexibility on how to wrangle this. When the Planning Commission looked at it, they looked at the accesses, and they looked at Nibley City's letter, and they declined it.
And wasn't Nibley City's letter based on it being an RU two and not an RU five?
Yes, and then we sent it back to them and said it's an RU five, and they said, same letter applies.
They still wanted the same letter even with an RU five?
And that was their letter where they were talking about too many houses, they didn't say how many there were, but that was another.
Well, see, Nibley's got, you can have a well protection area. So if you drill a well, you call, have, what you have a protection area, then you send that to the state. But you have to get approval for that from the state by the landowner. They did not do that. Had Nibley done that, we wouldn't have to worry.
That bridge down there to the south, how wide is that?
It's in three sections.
It's not a sixty-foot bridge.
No, no, no. It's got three sections on it, one-third of it has no decking on it, and then two-thirds of it has concrete decking on it. So you just can't drive-
And so, so-
Fall through.
See, and I, that's what I looked, that's, that's basically a farm access is what that is.
It's a farm access. When we, when we were doing river work down here, we probed under this bridge. So you can see how there's no decking on this portion. You can walk on it, but you can't drive a vehicle on that. It's, you know, it's missing the six inches of concrete.
What, what is it if it's not concrete?
It's just like the steel base frame, it's just like a steel plate, there's nothing there. So if you drove on it, you'd fall through.
Should a railroad car, what is the bridge?
I don't know. It's got a concrete deck.
Yeah, I can see that, but-
On the top, it's also got a concrete, it, it's, it's not a spread footing, it's like a giant box culver. But the, the underneath part of that concrete footer has nothing underneath it. We probed under there for fifteen feet and found nothing material-wise, it's all eroded.
Josh, what is that, what is that?
That was four or five years ago when we were doing river work.
At the edge.
What's that, that, that looks like an irrigation?
This is a diversion structure.
Which company is that?
Three blocks across here and push the water into this diversion structure.
Is that the Nibley?
Can't remember which one that is, and that runs right up through here.
That three-one-fifty-two-nine, that road goes right down through the center of that property. I noticed. And how many feet are we talking from there all the way? Because the farther you go, the wider the road has to be in for emergency and all that stuff.
Well, that's another fifty feet, maybe twenty feet.
Just twenty.
Just twenty.
And he's saying it's sixty feet, right?
Well, he's saying the right-of-way.
Right-of-way.
The right-of-way, but not the road.
Actually, no, he said the road was sixty feet.
Yeah, he did say the road was sixty.
He said the road was sixty feet wide.
He did say the road, I think he meant the right-of-way. He meant the right-of-way.
Yeah, but we can dance and-
No, he said the right-of-way, he didn't say the road. He says it has a sixty-five, a sixty-foot right-of-way there, and when you cross the bridge, it's sixty-five.
He said that after, at first he said it was a single road.
Yep.
So it's about sixteen hundred and sixty feet from Hollow Road back to their property on that south access.
And how long did you say?
I recall this years and years and years ago, when I used to be the president of that company, we'd go back there and put those blocks in that. Unless it's improved a lot, is it a very, very, very poor gravel road back into there?
It, it's difficult.
And, but I keep running in my mind that their request is to change the zoning on it from ten to five. And then after you've changed the zoning, apparently they want to build another home on that, and at which time, they have to address the fact of the bridge, and they've got to address the fact of the, of the road width and the road standard.
You could take it that approach as well. We just looked at it and said it's not a suitable place for development, that's what the Planning Commission looked at.
I still have a little bit of question in my mind. They're talking like there was ninety acres of land up in there, is that still there?
Up to the east, up to the east.
Can you expand that a little bit and see?
To the east of the property.
So that's that whole piece?
No. That's not even owned by him.
The red portion that-
The red is a delinquent.
Oh, the red is delinquent, that's not the property.
Forty.
But I thought it was up east of their property, to the north up there.
Which property are we talking?
Yeah.
I'm confused.
It's parcel three sixty-nine and two.
Cut-off points, there's a white house on it.
Two parcels out from that red, right there, that's the property right there.
Three sixty-nine and two is an eighty acre parcel.
Yep.
That one is eighty.
That big one is, it's these, these tillable ones up above.
And so there may be some future plans, you know, to improve that bridge and bring development up here, I don't know, but I've never seen any further development.
So they aren't crossing that section that's tax delinquent, are they?
Yeah, they are.
They are.
But it's not their property, it's someone else's.
No. Not according to the case.
Yeah, but there, there seems to be some trouble with it because the access to that whole house you're looking at isn't off this road we're talking about.
Right.
There's the twelve-foot road.
This house, which is where they live currently, is being accessed from this north.
Yeah.
So they're, I think they're, they're proposing that they come in from the south, but that would require-
Full redevelopment.
Josh?
Yes.
Interesting that that south access, you know, that's got a parcel, it's kind of, yeah, that's that shape there.
Yeah.
That's owned by someone else.
Yeah, that little narrow strip with the road goes right down the center of that property.
As far as I can tell, it's not an adjoining landowner.
Yeah, no, Murphy.
It's just someone else.
Or they deeded the right-of-way?
Again, they can work through all the legal details for a right-of-way, et cetera. They could rebuild the road, they could fix the bridge, they could do all those things. The real question on a rezon or property is, is it an appropriate location for additional development? That, that's really the question you have to answer.
Well, yeah, and it said, in the letter from Nibley, it says, Nibley is concerned that if the property owner were to be granted a rezon, that could result in potentially a half dozen more homes. Is that correct?
That's because they didn't change their letter from the RU two to the RU five.
RU five, what, limit it to one more house?
And then the question for them would really be, is it, is it financially reasonable to put that one home in with the amount of infrastructure they have to do? You know, you, you can go either way here. Planning Commission took their slant because they're trying to take a stance on where development makes sense. If you're not too concerned with one home and they want to work through the problems, then you can take the other way, it doesn't-
This is a legislative action.
Legislative, so.
So what that means is courts will give deference to legislative bodies in making these types of decisions. It's not like a conditional use permit. By certain standards set forth in the Development Code where you have to issue a conditional use permit if they meet those standards. This is purely legislative in nature, and of course, will give deference to legislative body.
Is that road off Nibley Hollow, is that Nibley's road to the bridge? No, because it had two owners on either side, that's why.
You know, I'm inclined to, to rezon it because it's one house, and I think if they want to work out all those details and pay for it, let them, you know? I don't, I don't think it's a, it's a bad thing. I wouldn't have liked it in RU two and putting a bunch of homes for just one house, I don't think is a big deal. That's just me.
That's why I'm laying, I'm laying the same way.
To re, to annex it to a five, put one more home in there, and I mean, there's a lot of work to get that done through the Planning Commission. It's not an easy fix. I mean, you, you say, okay, you can go ahead and, and change the zoning on that to a five, you can put another home in, but then you've got to start dealing with the road, you've got to deal with the bridge, and you've got to deal with all that.
Only trouble is, who's gonna marshal it? Who's gonna check it? Who's gonna do it?
The county has to.
Right here.
That's right.
Josh is so good at that though, you know?
Yeah, it just takes, just takes time and-
Then the next thing you do is you'll have the same people here telling you that the standards are too rigid, you know?
Well, we, we, no, we just-
They'll want, they'll want you to put the garbage, right?
We just barely went through. You gotta build, you gotta build next to a road where there's power and everything. Is it, I, I'm not sure, but is that next to a road?
Well, he says there's power and stuff in there.
Is that next to an oil road? Or is that sixteen hundred feet of dirt road?
It's not much more than a dirt road. Well, I mean, that's the thing that he'll have to deal with, and that is, he's gonna have to make an adequate road just county standards to do it before he can get a building permit. Same thing with the bridge.
So did we just turn down one in Menden because they did, they wanted to put their own road in, but we says no? The house isn't on the old road, it's back there?
Was it on any road at all though? Can't remember.
You make a good point, Johnny.
Well, I mean, let's be consistent, one or the other.
You make a good point.
Well, this is an existing trail, at least.
Which, which is-
It just makes it hard on the Planning Commission to work.
I mean, I don't know how hard-
Something to do. No, they, they go through this and they study it and they talk about it.
They do.
And then they say, well, this is kind of what we've been directed. So they made their recommendation, ah, we didn't like that recommendation, we're gonna-
And I would, I would just say this, I could almost go along, almost with Gordon and Gina, if they'd been using that road at all for the house, but they're just switching midstream, they've been using the north road. So now they're gonna, now they're searching around to say, where is the possible road? There's a cow trail down there, let's just call that the one we're gonna use, rather than the north road. So if they've been driving on it to get to the house, maybe we're inventing a new, we're inventing a new road that isn't even a county road.
That is a county road because it's been there for, ditch company's been using it for a hundred and fifty years. And so it is a road, it's just never had any development of any kind on it. And the only people that used to go back to that thing was just the water master to change the waters and stuff. And if you go look at that now, I haven't been there for probably ten years, but ten years ago, and I don't see any homes bill on it, it is a real poor, you got weeds growing up in the two lane, that's how little it's used, but it is a county right-of-way.
And we have said we'll allow buildings on private lanes.
It's a private lane.
What is it? Is it a private lane?
Yeah, and we have said we would allow homes on private lanes. But I thought it was up to three hundred feet or six hundred feet or something.
Well, we'll allow up to three homes on a private lane.
Yeah, but isn't there a distance?
There's distances and all that, they, they can go through design exceptions.
Yeah.
The only thing I'm gonna tell you is they may tell you they're gonna come in from the south today.
Well, Josh, in the-
Dave, do you remember Estancia? They, they told us the south, the south, the south, the south.
They're gonna use the south axis, south axis.
Which road does everybody use?
North.
Well, I, there's a way to solve that though, let's tell them to end the road.
And then they come after you, want, now we want you to improve that road that, you know, they said they wouldn't use, which is happening. But this is interesting, is they also own the property just straight to the south of them. And it's just interesting that they aren't just, they're only gonna build one home, why they, instead of going through this whole process here, they want to just-
Well, you think in the future they're gonna use that as justification for more?
It's just, it's just interesting how they're-
Yeah, because I think that's what Nibley City is afraid of too, just by what's in that letter.
Well, before they were gonna use the other road, and there's too many homes on it. So now we've come up with Plan B. This is just Plan B to get a house where the other way wouldn't work. And the feeling was just what Josh said. Once the house is there, they're not gonna come this way, they're gonna go the other way anyway. But I don't know how you'd do anything about that.
You don't. We can sit on it for two weeks and bring it back and see what you all think in two weeks.
Why don't you do that, research it a little bit?
The only thing we've drafted at this point was the Record of Decision for Denial, so we'll let it sit as that unless there's other motivations, and, and if you decide to go the other way next week, we can quickly draft that for the February twenty-sixth meeting.
I do have a question on that, is it premature to put that on? Because I wonder if for the public, it makes it seem like the decision's already made?
We used to not because of that fact, and then you guys started making motions anyways. And so what we've been doing is drafting the resolution or Record of Decision or the ordinance based on the Planning Commission's recommendation so that when you guys go to make a motion, there's at least something there. We used to always have a public hearing and then nothing on the agenda. And so that we could take all that public comment and then formulate a response and then bring you back. You'll remember, we used to ask you, how would you like us to proceed on this?
Right, yeah.
But then you started making motions right on the tail end of your public hearings. And so in order to be able to catch your motions, we started bringing you either a Record of Decision or an ordinance immediately with the public hearing based on what the Planning Commission's findings were.
Can we maybe freestyle it as possible Record of Decision?
We have a Record of Decision, but we don't have to act on it.
Yeah.
It's true, but just the public doesn't understand that, so if that was me, and I was looking at that, I'd be like, wow, government already decided what they're gonna do, and it doesn't matter if I come and tell them anything. That's kind of how they see things.
And we're more than happy to go back, because we had formulated this in a two-step process for exactly that reason. We're more than happy to go back there, but you guys have to stop making motions after your public hearings for either approval or denial.
Well, I kind of like the way you're doing that.
I do too.
Just every once in a while, we're gonna run into one of these things where we may not agree with the Planning Commission.
I would prefer to do what Gina says, because that's always bothered me, you have a public hearing and-
You've already got a predetermined motion.
That's why I have a public hearing. The public hearing, you're supposed to get all their information, and you're supposed to go back and think about it a while, and then reach your decision. And that's what the public hearing's for.
So we gotta remember not to waive the rules to do when there isn't a resolution before us.
But at the same time, after the public hearing, they, the Planning Department will need to know what to draft, I mean, they need to know whether to bring-
That's why we, you'll remember like two years ago, we used to ask you, what's your leaning on this, where would you like to stay?
Yep, yep.
Those conversations about-
Vividly.
Beginning of last year, we stopped having those conversations because you guys started making motions, and we just started trying to catch up, so.
We can go right back to that?
That is no difference to us, it's two weeks extra in the process, but I think it's a cleaner, smoother process.
I think how we're doing it is great.
I'll let you guys flip the coin, you let me know what you'd like.
Let's take a vote on that, it'll be split.
Well, how come we gotta wait until February, the end of February, why can't we decide at the next?
We can- We can draft them both if you, if you want both drafted for your next agenda. We just have to notice both that we've got a Record of Decision and an ordinance pending.
Probably what we should do in this case, but all the other cases, I like it when it's pretty unanimous that it's gonna go through.
Okay, we'll draft you both for next.
Like D and D, there was no real controversy. There's been controversies in the past, but for the way you've done it now, it was okay. And it was obvious that we didn't have any concerns and neither did the Planning Commission. And I like the thing that you can do it and then he can move on two weeks quicker or even a month quicker.
Well, maybe if it's a Record of Decision, maybe you could just put potential or possible or suggested or something so that it doesn't look like we've already decided. I think that's the issue. I don't mind if we have something there if it makes your job easier, as long as it doesn't look like.
Well, we're here to make your job easier. It's not our job easier, it's your job easier. We're trying to give you.
Just so I clarify too, the bottom line is if it's a zone change, it remains in the same zone unless they are able to get, you know, four votes. That passes an ordinance that changes the zone change. The Record of Decision is really more for like a conditional use permit where you're adjudicative in nature. I mean, I'm fine, you know, doing that so we know what the ultimate result was, but really in order to change the law in zoning, it takes four votes and an ordinance to do that.
Could we not, it says, with this one, it says now the Cache County Council denies the hollow rezone. Could you just put a checkbox in there that says approves or denies and that way, or you have to do the whole thing?
No, the reason for that is because one takes an ordinance. And so you have to pass ordinance affirmatively with four votes to change the zoning law.
Going back to what John made the statement that we'll build the home and then they'll still use the north road going against everybody else's. Saying that that's what you're gonna do and they're saying no. However, I do think that if you go through and make them make a nice road, make a nice bridge. That it would be far closer to come up the new road than it would be to wind all through that other one. And so I think that that would still be that they would use the new road, not the old one. So they would use the south instead of the north.
At the end of the day, what we care about is fire access. Whether they use north or they use south, we don't care. But what we do care about is that we have a twenty-foot wide, all-weather, maintained, year-round surface that we can get fire engines in on.
Across the twenty-foot range.
We do care if they go north or south. Because if they come in on the other road, they got more houses on a private lane. If they're gonna have a house, it can only come in on this side with an improved road.
But I can't really go out there and police it, but I can police the fact that if they've got a fire on a day like today and they never plowed that road and they never widened that road. We have about this much chance of.
You just can't give a building permit until the other things are in place.
Right.
And once they're in place, I think you'll see them use the new road, better road than they would that other one.
But if you approve the rezone, then have to hang it up on the building permit, how, how much problem does that create?
Oh, we go through that process all the time. You'll hear that word being needed.
That just puts the onus on them.
You'll see the same argument now. It'll just be that we're requiring too much road improvement or we deal with that on a, on a regular, ongoing basis.
Yeah, the road's good. We tested it.
Well, I just, unless there's anything else, I, I. I would propose that we defer any action.
We'll draft both options for your, your February twelfth meeting.
And just so the notices, that's gonna be continued for the next meeting with both options drafted, a Record of Decision and an ordinance. Is that?
Do we need a motion for, on that?
I think it's helpful to actually formalize it with a motion because you've noticed what's hap, you know, happening here and so.
I'll move that we move this to the next meeting and that we have prepared for us both the Record of Decision and an ordinance approving.
One question on the motion before we vote. Is anybody gonna go look at it? What's gonna happen different next time in the next two weeks, different than where we're at right now?
I'm gonna drive it. That was my, I'm gonna drive over there.
Okay, if somebody's gonna go look at and study it, fine. But if it's gonna come back and nobody looks at it, let's do it today.
No, I'll go look at it. I.
I'm going to as well.
I'll drive by.
Okay.
You have a hard time getting there. You better have a four-wheel drive.
Yeah, you better have a shoulder.
I had a hard time finding it when I knew it was there.
Do we need a second?
Second? Okay, all in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, local legislators meeting, fourteen A, Saturdays from seven in the morning till eight thirty. Just making you aware. Over here, over here in the administration building.
Yeah, they wanted to start at seven instead of seven thirty this year.
Just go six and maybe they'll show up.
There are people.
Be there.
And then we've got County Day on the Hill, Wednesday, February thirteenth.
What day, what time are we, is that an all-day thing or what time are we going to be there? What?
I think we're done by one.
Okay.
We can leave or you can stay there and spend time with the legislature.
And, and if you want to go anytime, you can, you can go and call your legislator out and talk to him and go in and sit by him if you want to.
Has that started at eight o'clock or something in the morning? Is it that early? Was it eight or nine? And they've had that, the general, the first gatherings.
Seems like it's been eight.
That's what I thought too, but I wasn't sure.
We probably ought to get a count for Janine so that she can register everyone if they want to go.
I'll be there.
I'll, I'll go. Temp, temple's closed that week.
Okay. So John, Gordon.
Are we meeting him tomorrow?
We have a meeting tomorrow, Dylan.
Yeah, there's that.
That's not on here, that's why I wondered.
Happy birthday, Jill.
Happy birthday.
B C I O.
See if you like what UAC's doing or not.
The D C O group.
Yeah. Anything else that we need to discuss?
Council members?
I have a question on the Lincoln Day Dinner. Anyone else?
Oh, yeah, that's what we wanted to know too.
We were gonna put in our report, but Chris is here, so.
If you're gonna put in your report, I'll let you. Then we'll talk about it.
I was just gonna say, here's my report. Please, Chris, come and tell us.
You want to come and tell us about Lincoln Day Dinner, Chris?
While he's getting, coming up here after we meet with UAC, we ought to maybe think about everybody going to that meeting at seven o'clock of all our legislature. And voice our unhappiness about how we're getting funded at the jails.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
I know the, the governor had an additional.
Three?
Dollar fifty, I think. They.
They were, UAC's pushing for three, at least three, weren't they?
Well, it's supposed to be seventy bucks is agreed on.
That's what I thought too.
That's already agreed and three bucks isn't gonna do that. It's gonna take twelve.
There, there are other counties also pushing that forward. So maybe together, unitedly, we can.
Cell phone number if you want it. You can call him right now.
He's my neighbor. I see Casey all the time. In fact, he teaches Sunday School with me. He just never comes.
Well, hey, I appreciate just a few minutes. I won't, I won't keep you. You've had a long meeting and I appreciate you allowing me a few minutes. But so this year's Lincoln Dinner is, it was on the calendar for February sixteenth from the beginning of last year. Like from the, from the time the dust settled on last year's dinner to, to a couple of weeks ago. And we had to move it to February second. Reason being, because our keynote speaker, Senator Mike Lee, we needed to accommodate his congressional schedule. And so, so we pretty much moved heaven and earth to, to make that happen and to get a different location. We had a couple of options on the table for that location, one of which was the Cache Event Center. Which, you know, we will look to, we will look to that, that in the future as we have more time to prepare for the event. And to, you know, hopefully not, you know, because we'd love to use that event center for the, for these dinners and for our conventions and everything else that we're doing. So, so it will be at USU up at the Taggart Student Center, the ballroom. Each of you should have received an email and/or a text from me at this point about a table sponsorship. I have decreased, in the past, historically, our table sponsorship for county council or elected officials is five hundred dollars. I've decreased that to four hundred to encourage more participation from our county elected officials. You're welcome to sponsor a half-table. A lot, a lot of years, people do that. Gina and James usually split a table. Craig and Chad split a table. So, and we appreciate the support very much, so.
How many is per table?
What's that?
Eight, eight people per.
Eight per table, yes. Yeah, eight per table. And so, and, and so if you, if you want a table, some of you have already responded to me. Let me know if you want a table. Please respond to me. Let me know. We're trying to send those invoices out ahead of time to make sure that we're not out chasing money afterwards. And, and we've never had to do that with any of the council members in my knowledge, to my knowledge. But, so we do appreciate it. Senator Lee will be our keynote. We would like to have, we were gonna have some reports there, some legislative reports from our current state legislators. We'll have a report from Senator Romney, either from himself or from his office. We'll also report, same thing with Congressman Bishop. In that note, we would like to have a report from, either from the county council or from our county executive. Seeing as how we are all of the same cloth and with, being Republicans. So we'd like to have that presented as well, just a very brief, you know, report. So that people know that, you know, kind of get that update. So any questions about anything?
What time does it start?
So it starts at, so we'll start, there's a reception beforehand. That's from six to seven. That's when you'll kind of check in, get your, check in, get your dinner tickets, have a seat. We are, because we're holding, holding it on campus, we are using USU Cater. We're doing a two-entree buffet this year. So a little easier with that number of people that we're expecting. In fact, they just kind of told me they wouldn't do anything else but the buffet because of the number of people that we're expecting to, that we're anticipating. And so, program starts at seven. Senator Lee will have some, we have some awards, we have some things that we're gonna present. One of which will be to honor Greg Merrill for his service on the council or his years of service on the council. And to the, you know, to the community, to, you know, to those districts in Logan. So we'll be honoring him. We'll have our other, we'll have two other awards, our Spirit of Lincoln Award, which goes to a, a local business, a local community, a local business. We've got four or five nominations right now. So if anybody thinks of any, any other nominations, please text me. Let me know. We're gonna be deciding on that Thursday night in our Executive Committee meeting. Right now, I think it's Lee's. Lee's Marketplace, Pepperidge Farm is another one. I'm drawing a blank. Anyway, there's some others on there. There's like four or five, four or five businesses we've got on there at, at the moment. And then we've got some individuals that we're considering for our Strength in the Community Award as well. We've got some individuals that we've kind of pinpointed for their contributions to our community and other outstanding, you know, efforts. And then there's also, at the request of the Governor's Office, we are gonna be honoring Terrell Warner for her years of service on the State School Board. And for all that she does for Cache County as a victim's advocate, we're going to be honoring her as well. She doesn't know that yet, so if you see her or talk to her, let's not let the cat out of the bag. She will find out eventually. But if she's watching, she'll probably find out, but.
She hasn't got time to watch.
Right, exactly. She probably didn't have time to watch, but, but anyway. So we will be honoring her as well. And that was a request from, that came from the Governor's Office, Tammy Pfeiffer, Secretary of Education for the Governor. And so either Governor Herbert or Lieutenant Governor Cox will be present to present that award to her. So we're not sure which, or both may, both may attend. I don't know. So, anything else? Any questions?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Oh, one other thing really quick, with regards to our local, our weekly meetings with the legislators. So one of the things that we would like to do as the county party, and I'm going to be discussing this with our Executive Committee Thursday night. But one of the things that we as a party would like to do is to, to show that, you know, to show that we support that, obviously. They're, you know, they're all Republicans, that we would like to be added, as a, potentially added as a co-host of that weekly meeting with the legislators. And we, I'm going to propose on Thursday night that we actually provide muffins or danishes or juice or whatever every week. You know, I don't know how that works, you know, how that works, but I'd like for us to contribute to that and show our support, you know, for that. Because I think it, you know, it's very important. I know I've already got comments. I've already had some questions and calls and texts about it. When does it start? Is it going to start this Saturday? You know, what are the times, all those things? So we're doing some of those things there and, and we're working also with legislators to meet with governments, governors, or government, the G Y C, Government Youth Council. Bay River Government Youth Council. They're meeting, some of our legislators are meeting with them this Thursday night to go over some things leading up to the Legislative Session that starts next week, so.
Okay, thank you.
So if you got, they're not going to do it the week before the legislature starts like they did last year, that actually start on the second of February?
Um, I don't, I don't know.
That's what we were, that's what we were told.
Right. I mean, yeah, that's, that's kind of what I was planning is the, is the Saturday after, you know, the first Saturday after session starts.
I just wanted to clarify and make sure that.
Right.
We're planning on before.
No, we're not planning on January twenty-sixth. We're not doing that. That'll be a softball practice.
Okay. All right. Gina, anything else?
I do, yes. Two things quick. I want to talk, I talked to Craig McAllister and he would like to have a little historic display outside his office with some of the old, the old books that they have. Old things that the Treasurer's Office did. And I told him to get us a bid. He wants to have like a little display table that we look at, which sounds like a great idea. So he's excited about that. So I asked him, just, you know, get a bid and kind of we'll go from there. The other thing is I'm part of the USAC Legislative Committee and I did talk to Sean Mill. Barbara, I know you're interested. I'll just have to pass stuff off to you because he didn't want to have two people from the same county, which makes sense. But we will be having a phone call tomorrow and so I just wondered if there was any specific legislation you wanted me to bring up in that, that we want USAC to support or look at or be aware of. That we can help push in UAC as well. I, I forgot we were meeting, I guess we met last weekend, talked about it and I forgot to come, so apologize.
Senator, Senator Harper's Bill on transportation.
Okay.
The one that will expand the ability for our county to have more options with the transportation funding. As far as transit, so that we can negotiate with the Transit District for, for that quarter of a cent. I have talked to, to Todd Bueller and CVTD, it's probably not gonna be a down there fighting force, but they're not gonna fight against that.
Oh, that's good. Okay.
I believe the language is already in the bill, but we're hoping, I know Jeff Gilbert mentioned to me that the CMPO has been, or the COG has been putting a certain portion of their funding aside for rural projects. I know Trenton, Lewiston, Paradise has, has gotten some of that money in the last couple of years. Right now, that would be taken out of, of the, of the COG's ability. So that needs to be put back in the bill. I'll work with Jeff Gilbert on that and see if we can't get that ability put back in, in the bill. Because, you know, we don't have the, what is it, the terminology they use? It has to be a.
It has to be maintenance on a classified road.
Classified, okay.
So it has to be part of the MPO plan. It means it has to be on a long-range MPO. So it has to be part of the MPO plan. It means it has to be on a long range MPO. It can't, it cannot be maintenance on those roads. It has to be new capacity.
Yeah.
On an MPO plan, by the way. So that would limit us down to the MPO areas. It would limit us down to wherever the MPOs are initially going to be fixed. And it can't, it can't be anything but.
So those are mostly collector, right? We don't have.
Well, there's collectors, there's archerials. But really, when you look at some of the counties you have recently, it's been like building overlays. Like Menon City had a pavement overlay. That would not qualify. Trenton had a pavement overlay. Lewiston had a pavement overlay. Cache County did a pavement overlay. None of those would qualify. We'd have to go in there and make structural changes sufficient to increase the capacity of those roads.
Okay.
So what did, on that other part, you know, they, we were gonna be reclassified, then they put a hold on county reclassification, didn't they? So we're still.
That legislation.
So if that passed, we should be able to do what two was, which shouldn't, which shouldn't be ten percent, shouldn't it?
Yeah, we should follow both legislati-
Make sure they both.
Both pieces of legislation. Make sure they both pass. Representative.
Is that Wild?
Wild is sponsoring that change of classification. So that's one we, we need to follow too.
Okay.
Good.
And then the jails.
Jails, yeah.
Well, that's not up for anything legislation.
Isn't it? Or is it in the budget?
Well, that would be a budget issue.
A budget issue, but still, that's something that we need to mention. So, okay. Any others? Okay. I'll try to keep you posted.
Just happy to be here.
Barbara?
Yeah, I um, I've had some really good visits since our last county council. I've visited with Dayton Kreitz and Sheriff Jensen and Amy Adams and James Wink and Lee Edwards. And um some good things coming out. I did go to that meeting um with the Cash County Jails, the Joint Jails Committee. I wasn't quite sure what I was doing there, but I listened and I learned and, and um is, I discussed some of the items with Sheriff Jensen and, and taking some notes. They're, they are asking for additional money for, you know, for their, for programming. But the, the amount that they came up with for a daily rate was in an increase or, anyway, they're looking like about seventy-two dollars a day. And that's seventy-two fifteen. And I don't know if there was some follow-up discussion on that, Craig, or not, on any calls. Okay. Um they're looking at a, at a three-year rate, looking out of about ninety-eight dollars, a little over ninety-eight dollars on it. So, and um.
Which is what's set aside right now almost.
Yeah.
For them.
Yeah. Um.
Budgeted of preliminary.
They um, they were looking, there was Representative Eric Hutchings there. And apparently he's the representative for the Joint Jails Committee and had a good discussion on that. Um Senate Bill two oh five, I haven't really looked into it, but it has to deal with death in the county jails. And they're looking at some legislation on that.
Senate, Senate Bill two oh five passed last time. It's a reporting requirement bill. And so this year, now that they have the data on the deaths in, in county jails and what the principal uh primary cause of death, they're looking at funding some like mental health options. Uh there's a meeting Thursday that the group, I'm, I'm the representative for counties from the second to the sixth class. So I'll be going with our jail commander down to the Capitol.
Great.
To review uh what new legislation may come out of the Senate Bill two oh five from last year.
Good. Thanks, Lee. Um with Dayton, um he, he's expecting a baby, so he was, he's kind of a little bit on, on that wor- more worried about that. But he has a great plan that he's working on and different things that are going up on with that. His mass, he's continually working on his uh master plan. And then the bike lane from Smithville clear down to Hiram and different ways to look at that. Sheriff Jensen, um he just, it was more or less a orientation for me so that I could learn, you know, about the jail and what was going on there. And, and um eventually I'll do some drive-alongs and he's going to take me into the jail itself and let me take a look at the jail that way. Visited with Amy. We talked about the compensation committee and what she was looking at in the, for that. Looking to um again get her master plan. And as a surprise to me, I didn't know we didn't have a written pay plan. There's no manual or policy or anything that's been written for a pay plan for the county. So that's going to be one of her big undertakings is to get going on, going on that. And um and I had talked with James today and that's about it on my report.
Thanks, Barbara. Gordy?
Uh question, and I don't know if this council can help me or if Lee can. I had a, an individual that serves on the, the cemetery committee out there in Nibley and, and Millville. And he was telling me that they're wondering what procedure they have to take to expand their taxi area. He said that Nibley and Millville both vannex property, but it hasn't been changed on their ability to take those new properties and, and be able to levy a tax against them. What, Lee or Josh, what, what is the procedure to expand that so that they are able to take in all of the city limits that have not, have not been done?
There is a state code provision. Since they're a special service district, they have to follow the annexation provision for special service districts. And I can give them the code sections, but I don't represent that entity, so I can't.
I thought that I had already sent him the code.
Craig, I, I, I sent a code to Craig and because that question came up.
Did they ask? Yeah, well, it would've been Randy, but Jim and Randy in their committee was wondering. They don't know how to do it. They've never done it. And, and so I guess they're just asking for some direction.
That, that's the direction. Uh the other thing that they might be able to do is, is work with the Utah Association of Special Service Districts as far as like pooling resources to assist them in accomplishing what they want to accomplish. It, it can be done under state code. It just, that we can't do it for them because they're a separate entity.
Yeah.
Our county attorney can't do their work for them, you know, as a district.
So what would they, what would they do? They would go hire a private attorney to, to do that?
The specials, the special service districts, they do have resources.
They do have individuals that can walk them through it.
Yeah, there's a, a webpage if you, that they can go to, Utah Association of Special Service Districts that may have some like combined resources to help them with issues like that. I can give them the state code. I don't have a problem doing that, but I can't represent them in like that.
So have you already done that with Jim?
I, I know Lee sent me the information. I'm pretty sure that I forwarded it to Jim, but if he hasn't gotten it, let me, let me know.
Call back. I mean, I, I just realized if I was, if I was one of those guys on that committee and I had to do it, I wouldn't know where to go. I mean, it's something out of their league, but they still need to do it and they still willing to do it. It's just an immediate start.
I, the guy that's over the special districts is, uh named Graham Bitter. And I got his contact information. I can get that to Jim also, but uh runs in my mind that I forwarded that email.
You may have already done that.
If not, have him get back in touch with me.
All right. That's all I have.
Thanks, Gordy. Paul?
Two quick things. One of them is I attended the Economic Outlook and Public Policy Summit by the Salt Lake Chamber of Commerce. So I just, I, I've got some of that data in electronic format. I'll send it to you. It's their legislative priorities. And let you kind of digest that as we move into what the, you know, meeting with our legislatures, I think maybe some of the things that Salt Lake Chamber and Salt Lake County's trying to push may not quite be what we necessarily want to see. So at least I'll give that to you so you can see what their hot buttons are. And then number two, uh just three words. I attended the State of the City, the Logan City Council meeting last week. Um something to be thinking about, plastic bag ban. They would love to push that on to uh all of, all of us.
Yeah, I've been, I've been approached.
Just as an FYI.
We did go to that meeting. It's kind of in flux right now.
Yeah, but that's, that's still, I know a hot button issue that they would uh maybe approach you online. I don't know.
You can tell that they've got a, a letter writing campaign to their journal now.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, yeah.
But at the advisory board, we told them, uh, you know, it's, let's try a little education. Let's see what we can do. People recycle them and you gotta have a massive quantity to do it.
Oh, yeah.
And uh we thought maybe we ought to get a little more education.
It'd be good, because I think Logan, at least what they're gonna try to do, that the Logan City Council will say, we don't, we won't take any action on this. We want it at the county level, so whatever pressure they're feeling.
Yeah, it's Ahmad's one pushing it.
There might be a bill in the legislature that keeps cities from losing such a ban. I've heard some mean things about it.
An anti-band ban?
An anti-band ban. Say that fast bike type.
So there you go. That's all.
Dave?
I don't have anything.
And I'll, I'll just uh report that Craig and I went down to the uh UAC Board Meeting last week. It was my first time being there, but uh I don't know, Craig, anything significant that came out of that for you?
I haven't even heard it before. Talked to um Executive Director, you know, salary and that type of thing. So I can't tell you what happened there, but um they are wanting to get into more economic development, working mostly with rural county, counties I think that don't have that ability to economic development. They've hired an individual to do that. It seems like we've got all kinds of resources as far as economic development right now. And uh I was just gonna bring up another. We're members of the EDC Utah. We've been members in the past. Um I think it's interesting that it, I got a, an email today from uh EDC Utah. It's their, they call it their Economic Minute. And the title was Employee Number One Rejoins EDC Utah to Lead Community Strategy Initiative. And so I read through that. Employee number one is actually the first person that was ever employed by EDC Utah. His name is Alan Rindlitzbacher. He's from Amalgas and he's a classmate of mine. Um and so I think we probably ought to, I would like to approach Alan and say, Alan, come up, come back up to Cache Valley. Uh give us a little guidance as far as what direction, which one of these organizations and how should we move forward, you know? Maybe the, the Economic Development Alliance could have him come up and kind of speak and.
That'd be awesome.
Tell us, okay, which direction is the best way to go. Once we get our strategic plan, let's, let's have him, you know, take a look at it and maybe give us some, some ideas.
His dad was my principal in grade school. I saw him a few times. His dad? He's a good man. Come to Jesus moments.
But I, thanks, Carl. I, I think the board, the board meeting was good. I think we've got a um, I think we've got a board that it's not just the same people. We've got, it looks like there are a lot of new faces.
New faces, I think. That's what they've reported, yeah. Anything else? All right, let's adjourn.
I'll do a half table.
What's that?
I'll do a half table.